We've got everyone and it looks like it's right about five o'clock. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting, this special meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us. This is a specially convened meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to address several items related to the local response efforts around the COVID-19 concerns. So we have two specific items that we want to address tonight. The first is to discuss the One Buncombe Fund, which we'll hear about more in just a minute, but the idea is that we want to create a platform whereby local government, businesses, and individuals can come together to help individuals as well as local businesses during these especially difficult times. And the other item we want to talk about are the county commission's bylaws, which could allow us to have some of our commissioners or all of us, I guess, actually meet remotely so we don't have to physically convene in order to have an official meeting. And I'll make note that Commissioners Jasmine Beach Farrarrah and Al Whitesides are both participating in this meeting via conference call. So they are listening in and will participate and vote on any matters that we vote on tonight. All right, so are there any other items that we need to address this evening? Ms. Pender?
We do have the matter of the Register of Deeds closing. I just prepared and had a chance to hand down a resolution just to ratify and affirm that decision by the board.
Okay, all right, we'll add that as well. Register of Deeds was closed Monday and Tuesday. It's scheduled to reopen tomorrow. We did issue an executive order closing it because the operation of Register of Deeds is kind of special in that there's actually state statutes that talk about the county commission needing to vote to change the hour, so we want to kind of retroactively affirm that. Okay, anything else?
Chairman, do we just need to verify that everybody's okay with adding that to the...
Yes, is there any objection to adding that?
None.
Okay, hearing none. All right, then let's go ahead and start with a discussion of the One Buncombe Fund, and Tim Love is going to help us get started on this discussion.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Real excited to talk to you this evening about One Buncombe. We've got some slides to help us get through today's presentation. Of course, stop me if you have any questions. I would also like to mention that, you know, many of our partners are not here with us today because they're, you know, at their own board meetings, but there is one who is here, and that's Mountain Bizworks. Matt Raker is hiding behind that column over there, but if the conversations get too into the weeds on underwriting, I'm sure he'll come out of the woodwork. So with that said, One Buncombe, our presentation, so the need, as you're aware of, you know, since the COVID-19 outbreak, thousands of jobs have been reported as furloughed, lost, or in peril. Every day we get new messages about this. You know, while we know that there are programs that exist to support members of our community that are facing job loss, we know that many of our individuals in this community may not be eligible for those programs. Examples of those include our independent contractors, 1099s, which are not eligible for unemployment insurance. Additionally, we know there are lots of programs to support small businesses. The challenge we face here is will these small businesses still be around in time when disaster relief funding is made available to them through the SBA and other programs? Our Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce has pushed out a survey. Within Buncombe County alone, they heard from 500 different businesses. It was a regional survey, so there were much more. The top two concerns for those businesses were related to cash flow for their actual businesses, but also funding for their actual employees who may lose their jobs. Regarding that survey, I wanted to show you quickly what that data looked like, and I won't steal the chamber's thunder here, but on the left, the question is, "How has your business responded to COVID-19?" You can see we received 511 responses. I've highlighted two buckets for you here. Thirty-two percent that they're closing, reported that they're closing their business, and another 26 reported that they're furloughing employees. If you do the quick math, you know, this isn't science, you know, 32% of 511 is about 160 businesses out the gates that reported that they're closing. In terms of the question on the right, which is, "What business resources do you need?" We got about 500 responses right under it. The top two items I've highlighted for you, 67% of the time, cash flow assistance. "How do I continue to make payroll when I can't bring in revenue?" Additionally, assistance for laid-off employees. "I would love to keep folks on payroll, but I can't afford to." Those are example survey results. I think you'll see more of this data as the weeks continue, but just wanted to share that for you. And so this helped us sort of focus this One Buncombe effort. And so the request today is for the Board of Commissioners to approve the establishment of the One Buncombe Fund and authorize a public hearing to occur on April 7th, 2020. And with, we can walk through this as we go, but as with any economic development appropriation, we do have to do a notice, and Mr. Frue can walk us through that as we go. So what is One Buncombe? First and foremost, it's a partnership. It includes local governments, such as Buncombe County, the City of Asheville, the Town of Montreat. Also includes business leaders, members of the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce, Mountain Bizworks, and the Land of Sky Regional Council. One Buncombe is also a relief program. The mission of One Buncombe is to support the basic needs of individuals and businesses that are impacted by COVID-19. One Buncombe is also a donation center. Our community is full of people that want to help, and we want to give them a way to do that in a centralized way. So One Buncombe will accept donations from individuals, corporations, foundations that are considered to be tax deductible. How does One Buncombe work? This is a new program for us, but this is how we've described it thus far. The idea is that individuals, businesses, and foundations would make donations through an online portal. Those funds would then be allocated by a community board to support the unmet needs of individuals and small businesses that are impacted by COVID-19. Finally, the funds would be administered by entities that specialize in direct assistance and loan administrations or small business lending. A little bit on the individual support model, as I've described, there's two big buckets here. One is about individual support, the other is about small business lending. This first individual support model, we've got a few items we want to talk through, and so first is eligibility. Who's eligible for One Buncombe as an individual? And these are folks that have lost employment due to COVID-19. We're not trying to solve for folks that lost employment before COVID-19. We're trying to solve for those that have lost since COVID-19. What can the funds be used for? I highlighted it here, life essential needs. Examples of those, this is not a comprehensive list, but just to give you ideas, electric bills, fuel oil, kerosene, propane, mortgages, basic life needs. The model, it's a direct assistance model, which is something we've used in our Department of Health and Human Services, but the idea here is we don't pay cash to individuals, we pay service providers. So if you are approved for mortgage support, we'll pay your lender, but we're not going to give you cash in hand. The program would be administered, as I said, by the Department of Health and Human Services, who, as I've said, currently operates in a similar model currently. The way the service would work, you know, once you're in touch with our One Buncombe HHS staff, they would see what other resources are available to you before providing you direct assistance. So in the instance of if someone wanted to pay a Duke power bill, we would first say, "Well, have you spoken to Duke about their deferred, you know, utility bill payment process?" Because we do know that Duke is offering that related to COVID-19. So we want to make sure that we're not being redundant and that we're filling in the cracks where folks are falling in. We want to provide those supports that currently aren't available. And so we think we've achieved that with the individual support model. I'll shift briefly to the small business model, but of course, ask questions at any point. In terms of our small business support, here we're talking about small businesses, again, that are impacted by COVID-19. Our definition for what a small business is, is a business with less than 50 employees. That's the definition we're using at this time. Could we explore that in the future? Sure, but we needed a place to start. In terms of how the funds would be used, again, we're talking about business operations to keep the business running, so that could be payroll, accounts payable, fixed debts, anything of that nature. Our model here is a loan model, and it's a low-interest loan model with loans up to $10,000, so these aren't extremely large loans. These are meant to get you through a hard time. And what we're saying is no payments for six months. So as you're sort of going through this recovery period, no payments required, there would be an interest rate associated with it. And the idea here is that we're providing quote-unquote "bridge lending." We know that the SBA, the beds, the state are going to offer relief. The issue is some of our businesses can't wait for it. So we want to put in place a bridge that gets us from here to there, and when disaster relief funding is available, you know, businesses are encouraged to move to those lending options, get off of this product and onto the lending product that is available through the SBA or whoever. The program would be administered by Mountain Bizworks. Mountain Bizworks is a community development financial institution that's been in our community for 20-plus years. They specialize in commercial lending. They do small business commercial lending. This is what they do. They've got loan officers ready today to assist with this program. So again, rather than the local government taking on responsibilities that we don't typically, such as lending, we're leaning on our partners that do the work. A big question for y'all, for anybody we're asking to donate to this program, is how's this going to be governed? How do I know that the money is going to be used the way you said it is? How do we make sure that we're meeting the need? So first off, our fiduciary for this will be the Buncombe County Service Foundation. This is a nonprofit arm of Buncombe County. It's been in place for years, and it would serve as the holding place for those donations that come in. Those donations would be allocated out by a community board that is made up of local government entities from the county, the City of Asheville, as well as members of the banking community, the philanthropic community, and then, and our business community. This board would be supported by a technical committee who will sort of keep them in the guardrails, if you will. So we're thinking about legal support, finance and accounting support, things of that nature. Finally, I've hit on this a number of times, but I'll do it one more time. Administration of these funds, we're going to lean on folks that already do the work. So for direct assistance, it's our HHS department. For loan administration, it's Mountain Bizworks. Again, we're not trying to recreate the wheel here. Big question is, when do we start? Some people would say that you can't start soon enough. What we would say is if it's approved by this board, we'll begin accepting donations from individuals, businesses, and foundations as soon as possible. We are working on a website that should be up and running within the day or so, and folks will be able to go to that website to learn more about the program and as well as donate. In order for Buncombe County funds or any local government funds to actually go into this program, though, we do require a public hearing, and as I said at the outset, the tentative public hearing, if you approve, would be April 7th, 2020, and that's a requirement of the economic development statutes. That said, we can still accept donations in the meantime, and additionally, we can accept applications for those that would like to participate in the program. This is a quick snapshot of what the One Buncombe website would look like, waiting final approval, but you get the idea. Pretty simple, big donate button and right in the middle that everyone can see, and a description of the programs that we're proposing to offer. One item I would touch on on this website, we try to keep it simple, so the web address would be www-onebuncombe.org. Circling back on the request, this evening, we're asking, you know, of course, want to hear any questions you have, but asking for your approval to establish the One Buncombe Fund and also to authorize the notice of public hearing for the tentative public hearing on April 7th. Final thing I would leave you with are a few wise words from our communication department, and these are, "Buncombe County is strong and resilient. When the times are hard, we look out for those with less and pool our resources to make sure our neighbors are getting by. Even though we are apart, we can come together as One Buncombe." At this point, I would turn it over to y'all to see if you had any questions.
I have a couple. So, and all these may have been covered, but one is from a legal standpoint. I know we have the, I know we have the foundation, I mean, we're set up to where we can receive money. As far as the notification, public, and at the time that we vote on it, can you just give clarification that the steps we're taking are in order and with appropriate statute and everything?
Yes, sir, as fast as we can determine, and we didn't do this in a vacuum. I discussed the issue many times with Brad Branham, city attorney, and we've been in consultation with the School of Government Personnel about the best way to launch this. It is, it is somewhat of a novel approach to do it. Counties do have authority to loan money, but in order to involve community partners, we created the One Buncombe. So the Buncombe County Service Foundation has been in place, formed about eight, nine years ago. It is a nonprofit, North Carolina 501(c)(3), so they've been taking appropriations usually in past years and distributing it to nonprofits as a partner, and we're just changing the program, or one program, or adding a program to their mission. So in that respect, it's authorized as an economic development program and also authorized under Chapter 166(a) as an emergency management tool.
Okay. Thank you. Second, what do we have built in that would avoid conflict between the seven-member board and those that would be receiving or requesting funds?
We've gone to some effort to make sure that no one that's going to be on the board, it's not majority county people. It's a community-driven. Chamber had a voice in it, the city had a voice in it, of course, we had a voice in who the membership were. Anybody that feels they have a conflict is, of course, encouraged to begin with to say, "We can't be a part of this," but we have vetted that and made sure that if there's any cross between that, the other have to pull themselves out altogether, recuse themselves or not participate. So we've looked into that.
Okay, my last question, thank you for bearing with me. The last question is regarding cost. I would hope that there is little or none with the disbursement of these funds. I would prefer none that allows them, whatever money's given, to go out and, you know, be able to get it very, you know, very quickly and timely. So I'm hoping that, you know, if there is a million dollars in it, that we are able to distribute a million, so that's my thoughts, but thank you for presenting it.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for bringing forward this idea. Of course, it's very timely, and I think we all want to know that we do whatever we can, right? Even if it's in some, frankly, considering the scale of what we're looking at in fairly modest ways, but I think, you know, we want to, we want to help folks at this time. The, one, it's kind of a question, or maybe it's a question, maybe it's a kind of more of a comment, but in terms of the, you know, the amounts of funding that we're going to be distributing here are not large amounts of money on a per-family basis or per-business basis. These are pretty modest amounts, but I think they could do a great deal of good, especially in the short term. As Congress works out their issues, there's likely to be substantial federal support for individuals and businesses coming down, but it will take some time for that to happen, and folks are being affected right now. So I think that's part of why this is, this is such a valuable idea to bring forward. I, you know, I've talked to a few small business folks in our community, just as we've been kind of like, you know, talking about this idea just over the last couple of days. So one idea that I just wanted to kind of suggest as, for consideration as we're creating this new program would be, you know, I think for some businesses doing a small business loan will be very helpful. They'll want to, they'll want to do that. Some of the, some of the small business folks I talked to said, you know, in light of where things are at with the economy, you know, taking on additional debt is not something that they'd be real attracted to. You know, some companies have said, "Even if you could help us with economic development, like an economic development mini-grant of just like $1,000 or $2,000." You know, barber shops who have shut down and need to pay the rent next week, you know, very small amounts of money could be very helpful at this time. So that's an idea I wanted to just put forward, that maybe there's, on the small business side, maybe there's a small business loan option up to 10,000, maybe there's an economic development mini-grant of a much smaller amount, but for folks who might, who frankly, that might be more useful to them than a loan at this time. So I just, just kind of wanted to bring that idea forward and ask if that's something that might be worth considering as we're, you know, creating this new One Buncombe Fund.
Thank you for that, and we'll definitely add that to this discussion. I think our next meeting is tomorrow, assuming we move forward. What we wanted to do is bring the commission a very focused idea that was lean and simple. And so, but I think as the group sort of coalesces and comes together, we'll be able to explore ideas like that.
Okay.
I appreciate the work that you've put into this, particularly from the assistance-to-individual side, that a lot of folks in the community are wanting to support individuals who have been impacted. And we are the ones that are stepping up to the plate to do that in our community, and I really commend you for looking at that and taking care of individuals and the needs that are going to arise, particularly over the next couple of weeks, and looking within our existing countywide infrastructure to make that happen and being able to connect folks with additional county resources. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Now, I can't pass up that opportunity to thank our partners. This really is a partnership, you know, across the street. Our city council is considering a similar program this evening, the same program, I should say. You know, we've spent a number of hours on the phone through the weekend and at night trying to work through this program, so there's a lot of people committed to it, including those in the room. So I want to make sure that everyone understands the partnership here.
So Chairman, just some, I guess we can discuss this more later, but are you seeing, are you thinking in lower amounts, say, and I'm just throwing a number out, 1,000 to 5,000, are you think, are you leaning more towards those being grants instead of loans?
You know, again, this is just, this has been an idea that didn't exist a week ago. It's all being developed pretty quickly, but I don't know, just thinking kind of, kind of conversationally, you know, the loan program would be up to $10,000, maybe there's an economic development, small grant program specifically for businesses that, you know, the government has required to shut down due to the response to COVID-19. Maybe it's $1,000 to $2,000, depending on the small business size, something like that. One of the other things I find attractive about this idea is you would be able to help a lot more small businesses, right? I mean, depending on how much funding goes into this, if, if there are a lot of people taking the $10,000 loans, it'll get, it'll get taken up pretty quickly. So anyway, those are something, it is very modest, but again, in the short term, might help folks solve for some critical payments that they'll be facing.
So, you know, just a thought, when people come to this site or wherever, you know, however, however they reach it, you know, it'd be good to have the other partners that they can go to, you know, which you mentioned, some of these other things where they can, you know, where, you know, we have the specifics for this program, but there's also other programs, and they may come and see that, and they may choose to click on that, go directly for them and not even, not even have the need here. You know, they go to the other programs. You mentioned a couple of them briefly, but they might be able to go to some of the other partners out there that are, that can do these things, particularly, you know, when I saw power bills and things like that, there's a lot of other assistance out there that can help with that, too.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
This is Al. I think it's an excellent idea, because when we go through things like this, and I know within the past, even back as far as the '70s, the people who really need small loans, it's, and like you said, for $5,000 or $2,000, it's not, it's nothing there for them. And a lot of them, they don't want to go into debt, say, for the 10,000. If it's a barber or beautician or something like that, they wouldn't need that much. But in this, we can get to them right away, because let's face it, when we start talking about SBA now, folks, it could take six months easily for that, and, you know, you don't know how long it would take them to come down. But I think when we talk about small businesses, no, let's talk about the small businesses, and a lot of them, it's just one or two people. It's not 45 people. And that's why I like your idea, Brownie. I think it's a good idea. We need to explore that and look at it.
Okay, appreciate that, Mr. Whitesides. And Commissioner Jasmine Beach Farrarrah texted and said she also had a question on this time. So Jasmine, what's your question?
Yeah, first of all, just thanks to everyone who's worked so hard to bring this idea to fruition. It's very exciting and inspiring. Two things quickly. One, I want to echo what Al just said and express support for your idea, Brownie. And the second thing is, and I think our whole team at the EOC is doing an excellent job of this across the board, and I hope we can use the same ends as we move forward with this funding initiative, is just making sure we're kind of really staying nimble, and it seems like the guidelines that are being established, they seem right on the nose for what we understand right now about the most urgent needs in our community, but it would be great to create some mechanisms through which we can also just assess as this progresses, whether there's additional needs we weren't aware of that could maybe be addressed through this, or whether something about the way, something about the guidelines might need to be adjusted. So as we move to formalize this, I just hope there can be some method for that kind of sort of real-time assessment, and if we need to make some modifications to the design of it, that we'll have the ability to do that moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, sir.
I just have a question. Mr. Frue, you said the county could loan, the money that, the fund that this is going into, is it set up to where loans and grants can be made out of that? Is, I want to make sure there's no, nothing that's preventing us if this comes about.
It's, I stated that counties can make loan, municipalities can make loans. I mean, if the county was going to go into this process alone and put in $100,000, the county could proceed on that basis. The county, you know, we don't have staffing to administer such a program, really. County cannot charge, cannot give an interest-free loan, cannot give a grant. I mean, there's just constitutional and other provisions against that. In developing this to give it an appropriation, economic development-wise, to the Buncombe County Service Foundation, we're facilitating an entity that's independent. We're making an economic development appropriations to that independent authority, and that independent foundation will be contracting with a third party to administer and conduct the loan program.
So we can do, we can do all that through that? I just want to make sure that, this is time to step up and help.
Yes, and that, that's the way to leverage more participation. I think we would be limited, the county would be limiting itself and its community partners if it just said, "We're going to go this alone." But doing it with this method, we make much more room for more community input and contribution.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a great idea, and I'm with you about the, if you could offer a grant, just a grant or something, because I, the stress is out there, and I wouldn't want to have somebody to have another's top of the stress, "I've got to pay back this loan when this all turns around," because it's going to take a while for this to come back, even if you do help them today.
Great. Well, thanks for everyone's feedback on this, and, you know, and it's one of, you know, we do need accountability, of course, whenever we're spending taxpayers' money, but it sounds like this is a very flexible program that's being developed. I mean, I can tell you, for people who have lost their jobs in the last week or about to lose their jobs, they need the money, right? Like, there's not really much of a question. They're going to have bills to pay, so let's get good documentation, but let's, you know, let's make this a very user-friendly process for people who are facing some tough times right now.
Can I make one point of clarification?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Chairman Newman.
Sure.
These are charitable gifts coming to the 501(c)(3), so it is different than taxpayer money. I mean, it's folks who are paying taxes in our community, but they are charitable, charitable contributions, correct?
Correct.
Thanks.
Right, from individuals, right.
The monies that the county would put, the monies that the county would put in would be the taxpayer dollars going into that foundation.
Right, so it would be a pool of kind of private donations, philanthropy, and some public, some public funds.
And just to be clear, because it is the Buncombe County Service Foundation, our finance office, Donna Warren and his team, would be giving out accountability to make sure we know where the dollars are spent. So that piece is layered in as well.
Thank you.
Great. Well, to all the partners who are working on this, Mountain Bizworks, the Chamber, county staff, city staff, thank you all for bringing forward this really good idea. So look forward to hearing more about it, and when will we hear, when will we hear more about it?
And I do want to say, we're talking with the City of Asheville, but also our small municipalities at the table as well. Montreat, they wanted to specifically say that their meeting is coming, but they do intend to fully accept and put some money into the pot, and I know Biltmore Forest and all the others are looking at it as well, so I don't want to not say them, because they're also partners.
Thank you.
We'll hear more about this on April 7th. We want to go ahead and set the We want to go ahead and set the public hearing to date now, if you guys are good.
Do we need a motion to do that? Or do we just put it on the agenda?
Yes, a motion.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to set a public hearing on the county commissioners' meeting on April 7th to consider the One Buncombe Fund?
Commissioner, if I may interject one additional piece, if appropriate, we would ask that you designated amount for consideration at the public hearing.
And the recommended amount is $200,000.
Correct.
Is that right, from staff? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you all so much. We'll talk about this again at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you.
I'll take any comment.
We'll take a public comment at the end of the, at the, we will. Yeah, we will. All right. Next up is a discussion of the county's bylaws and statutory authority for electronic meetings.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, just a couple of things. I don't know if you saw the paper the other day, the city of Asheville, their council beginning last week's meeting, the public's not allowed, they're allowing public comment in those meetings by way of email or voice message received at least 24 hours in advance of the regular agenda date. Checking with the school of government and other resources, I would suggest we do the same thing, and I handed each of you a recommendation. I'm happy to read through it. Our main impediment, the general statutes do authorize electronic meetings. Some of the statutes say you have to have a quorum and in person. Our rules, the rules of this board say that a quorum would involve four commissioners to be present to conduct business or to have a public hearing. So at this time, the suggestion is first, the commissioners may hold official meetings by use of conference telephone or other electronic means. Members of the board present either in person or by electronic means sound, shall be counted as a quorum, and staff shall provide means whereby members of the public may listen to the meeting. That's straight out of the statute, and those are the minimum requirements. Couldn't get that done for this meeting, but the IT has been working on it hard lately, and they're proposing to use Zoom technology. And we've probably all been on a Zoom conference call here in the last week or so, and it works pretty well. The pitch would be how to deploy laptops to all commissioners and key staff in case we couldn't meet in person, to allow a commissioner to be able to access that and be present to show who's participating in the Zoom conference and allowing at the same time for the public to listen in. Next suggestion would be for changes in the rules temporarily, would be no public attendance would be permitted, and then do public comment on agenda items taken via electronic means only, and with the following criteria to apply. Any public comment must be sent by 5:00 PM the day before the meeting to, and we're trying to set up a Word form. It'd be a click on a hyperlink or type in a link if you're just working on a computer, and it'll allow a different form of email, not to a specific, it would go to a specific address, but you just click the link. And the IT is also working on getting a phone number, a dedicated phone number by which the public can leave a message. So that'd be the pool of public comments that would come in. You must, if you're going to enter a public comment in that fashion, must state the which agenda item you're commenting on, or if it is an informal discussion like open comment period, must be no more than 350 words. At that point, I have a couple options. How do we deal with the public comment? The case law and blogs and others that opine on this stuff would point out that we required, any local government in North Carolina is required to have public comment at one regular meeting per month. So the board could just choose not to have public comment except for the public hearing on April 7th. Other options would be, we might have a big batch of public comment coming in this fashion from, from electronic means. I'll point out that the city didn't think that they would get a lot, but I know they got way over 100 in their first batch. So some of the options are, should we distribute public comment to the board for you to read it at your leisure or to go through at the time of the, of a public meeting? Have staff provide electronic or paper copies of that to the board? Another option would be not to have staff filter it, but if we got a number of items come in, I would limit that, that suggestion to say we have four in favor and 10 against, but no comment on what's in the content of that email. So those are the suggestions for proceeding through this COVID-19 on a temporary basis. And any discussion, I would just ask for a motion once we haggle out how to deal with the public comment portion and how to do your portion of that. It's important to remember that public comment is public comment, and the board is not required to respond, not required really to pay attention. There's a, there's a case several years back where a member of, a board down east somewhere would, he didn't like somebody, so he'd hold up a newspaper and just sort of block his face during public comment. The court's ruled that that's okay. He doesn't have to listen, he doesn't have to pay attention, but they're required to have a public comment, period. So that's just some of the things you might need to know to make an informed decision.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Questions? Thoughts?
So a question, if it was done by electronic means, or it's real time, would it be real time?
If they get the, if IT's able to overcome their technical hurdles with Zoom, it, it will be real time.
How, how would we verify they're from Buncombe County? Because, I mean, you could get, you could get somebody on there that could just
Well, the part of, part of the
Blow up the feed and not even be from the county.
I'm sorry. Part of the, part of what they're trying to overcome would be to make sure that the commissioners and key staff would be able to provide a voice input over the Zoom network, but to mute public. And they're, they would be limited to the electronic public comment, as I described. But they would be able to listen. Now, the statute requires that the public be able to listen.
And, Michael, so do the changes that you're contemplating here, I mean, they would allow us to create a 100% sort of virtual meeting, right, where all of us could be meeting that way? Or it could be sort of a hybrid of a traditional meeting where perhaps there's some of us here and some of us participating via Zoom. So it could be all of those different scenarios, not necessarily just one or the other, but, but it might be that we have a meeting here, but some folks are participating via Zoom, or in a completely virtual meeting if we needed to hold one of those.
Exactly. You're exactly right. I think my, my concern about, the current bylaws say you have to have four present and accounted for physically to be a quorum. The rules do say that, you know, three can participate electronically. So we first have to overcome that quorum thing, and then the quorum requirement by, quorum can be met by electronic participation by the board, and it'd be mayhold. So that allows the leeway to have one, three, four, or all seven commissioners here.
So I was on the, on the conference call today with the governor, and this question, specific question was, was asked, and there was no, you know, there wasn't any answer given to it other than, you know, flexibility and whatever. So I, I expect there will be, there may be something coming from, from the state on this. So I, I'm only saying that just for point of information, so y'all can, you know, communicate the, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners posed that question to the state today.
Well, that, there is a statute says electronic participation is authorized, but we're all in a unique time, and all the commentators say we're going to have to be flexible for the time being, but make, do our best to make reasonably, do everything reasonably possible to make public access possible so that they can listen and participate.
Sure. Just to kind of understand what our, you know, colleagues at the city are doing, are they actually planning on their next meetings being all virtual? Or are they, what are they actually planning to do? Do we know?
I think the city attorney's preference is to make sure they have four present. That's how they had it set up last week, and I believe that's how they're doing it tonight with four present, and they also announced the three that would participate electronically.
And, and, I mean, that, that, that option sounds pretty appealing to me, where there's still a physical meeting going on, but folks have the option to, you know, to virtually participate if they choose to. It allows us to kind of, you know, have more distance between the people who are here physically, and so that seems like a good model. I mean, are the staff right now contemplating the need for any 100% virtual meetings at this time?
So the question come into play, then, we said no more than 10 in a room or in a gathering, and we're more than that now. So we want to make sure if we are going to go forward with some here, that we limit then the audience to, to get to that 10 in a room. So we want to have that conversation as well. So if there's four here, there'll be six in the audience.
Sure.
And no more.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I, well, and that, and that number might change tomorrow, right? It probably is going to change tomorrow.
Correct.
So, but at the same time, I mean, I, I think, you know, we're going to be taking steps, we're not going to be putting items on our agenda that can be taken up later, right? Like, we're not looking to have some public hearings that are just going to be, you know, hot-button issues that fill up this room for the near future. But, I mean, I do think performing basic levels of governmental work is an essential service, right? So I do think we're not, as long as we're doing everything we can to respect the six feet and things like that, I mean, I do feel like we're fitting under that, that concept, so.
And this just allows that flexibility.
Okay. Well, great. Any other, you're just looking for feedback tonight, Mr. Freu, is that right?
I, I was just looking for some direction. I would just ask for a motion to approve what I have indicated, the suggested changes for the quorum being maybe, it doesn't say it's required, but maybe present by electronic means, that we will provide for public comment at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting to be received by that email or phone number and indicate what you're commenting about. But if we, if you can give me any direction about what's your preference for how to read through the public comment or provide the public comment? Because with all the public comment, I understand the city got, they're going to implement their rule and say, we'll read through them for 30 minutes or hand them out. I don't think they had decided the last I had heard.
Okay. I mean, my initial thoughts would be to, to read them. I mean, if it becomes just, you know, voluminous, then maybe at some point we'd have to, have to check that. But if it's, if it's not just going to take an exceedingly long amount of time, why not just read them into the record? It seems fine to me. Commissioners, y'all have any comments on that?
I don't have a problem.
My concern would be that people might write an awful lot, and there might be a lot to read.
Well, do we have to make a definitive decision? Can we give ourselves some optionality on, it could be this, or we could choose to do this, depending on, we don't know yet how much we're going to get?
We could put in that you reserve, the board reserves the right to limit public comment review to 30 minutes or an hour.
Or an hour.
Where we would just literally sit here and read public comments?
I guess.
That seems like a long time to me.
Well, you can also play, if they're recording, you can play the recording, too.
I think the same issue, it's just a matter of time, really.
But Mike, you said you're going to limit to 350 words, so that's going to be, so you said if somebody writes on and on and on, but after 350 words, you just put a line there, and that's when we stop reading.
That's true, and I think that, I think the regular rules would still apply. I mean, in my mind, the three-minute rule would still be in place. I think the board still has the right to say, we're going to limit it to two minutes. So, but 350 times several hundred could be an awful lot.
It also depends on how fast you read it, too. You could sit here and read it.
I can talk pretty fast.
Yeah, but, yeah. I want to continue it because the public needs to be heard. If we have to sit here for an hour to read them, let's just find somebody that can, that will read them, because we need to hear from our, our folks.
Now, what we are talking about is a public comment on things we take action on only, right? And the others would be hard copies that we can take home after the meeting, right?
Well, it could be whatever people send in, right? It might be sort of, here's what's on our agenda. But we also give people the right to comment on just sort of really anything that's on their mind, so it's pretty open-ended.
Yeah, but the ones at the end, we don't comment back anyway, so we could take them with us and read them after the meeting, correct?
As part of the record. Yeah, it does, in my mind, I mean, these changes don't change the other rules that are already existing in the rules and procedure. I mean, you'd still be able to say, one commissioner wants some comment, maybe you see a bunch that came in on one item of new business, or maybe a few on items of old business. So you'd still have those same options that you do now. And they would all become part of the record, one way or the other.
Well, why don't, so why don't we just start off, and we'll say, of course, we're all going to, we could get copies of them, so all the commissioners can themselves read them, because you probably, probably want to read them before the meeting, you know, so we can kind of think about those comments in preparation for the meeting. And why don't we say, we'll read them into the record at the meeting, not to exceed one hour? I mean, I think it'll probably be less than that, probably much less than that, but, and then let's just evaluate it, and if, you know, I mean, it could be, anyway, we can always change it if it's, if it seems like we need to modify it. Does that sound like a good place to start?
Yes.
Great. All right. Yes, ma'am.
I have one thing that more or more is going to fit, the notices. If you're going to have electronic meetings, you need to stay in the notice that it's going to be an electronic meeting and where people can listen, all those directions need to be in there, and how they can make public comment.
Okay. But if the meeting is still physically held here, and there's just some commissioners dialing in, so to speak, then that would just be the same as we do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
If you decided to go completely virtual media, and I think if you are going to take public comment, it probably in some alternative form besides people coming here and attending, that method probably needs to be in the notice. Regardless of how you guys are, you're not going to allow it.
Okay.
Heather's point is particularly appropriate for the economic development hearing that the board is going to have on the 7th. So at the end of that, it's not going to just be a regular square paragraph, we're going to put in a little bit about how you can participate. Here's how you provide your public comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Freu.
Do we have a motion?
We, who wants to make a motion?
I did last time.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations on bylaw changes as presented by Mr. Freu, with the understanding that public comment will be distributed to the commissioners prior to the meetings so they can read all the comments, and that the intention of the commission is to read the comments into the record at the commission meeting, not to exceed one hour.
Second.
Further discussion? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this motion? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I heard public comment one time, and then I heard public hearing again. So I'm a little confused about the public comment and the public hearing. Public hearing is not something you can debate on whether we can talk or not, public comment is. So the attorney referenced that, so I'd like to be clear on that. The other thing, the tone of this sounds a little, I know we're in a crisis, and I respect that, and I certainly want to be here at every meeting that I can and hear the comments, but also see the comments if they're going to be written in. If you get to see it, we ought to be able to read it at the same time you're reading it as well. The other, the other piece of this is that if the public could be here, would be even better. So if staff could be in another room and be on the speakerphone, just like the commissioners that's not here could be on the speakerphone, your staff, that way, they could respond to your questions, they don't have to be in a room. So that would give public commenters or even public an opportunity to be here. If there's 10 of them, that'd be great. It's your constituents. These are the employees. They can speak from a voicemail somewhere or whatever on the voice. So I just think the public needs to have as much opportunity as possible, and that's the way I think.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else?
Chairman, can I comment on that? Just a thought?
Yes, sir.
So, under, under pub, on a, like a normal meeting, under public comment, could we not have, just like we have copies of the ordinances and so on and so forth, and it's just a link underneath new business or old business? Can we not have, under public comment, just a link that if there's 30 letters, they're in there? Could that, and that, and then the public has
Could that, and that, and then the public has them, they know what's going on, we have them, we can look through them before the meeting, just like it was any other?
We wouldn't have access to publish that. We could have a link there that they could connect to, but we wouldn't have access to publish that.
If you had all the, all the, the letters, for lack of a better term, if you had all of the, each one of the public comments, say there was 20 of them, why can't that be just additional material under public comment, just like if we would have it on new business or zoning or, like a zoning map, or, I mean, it'd be just a PDF form?
Well, these are, the deadlines, the 5:00, 5:00 PM before the, they have the meeting. That agenda comes out Wednesday before the meeting.
Correct.
So they wouldn't have time to put that on there for us to look at it.
Okay, so that's, that's our answer.
And, I, the IT department is having enough trouble currently to try to make Zoom work, but, you know, I, I
Hey, I ain't trying, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there.
I think the first thing we do is let's give this a shot. I'll bring that up with the IT team tomorrow morning in EOC and see if they can give that a shot. My, my other concern would be, this is a limited public forum, so you can't come in here on any given day and just say whatever you want, however you want, and my fear would be that if you open up a link like that, you're putting a lot of stuff in the record that doesn't belong.
Oh, I'm not saying that, that they have access to that link. What I'm saying is if we got 20, you know, public comments, and there's, you know, we, that would just be supplemental information in the, in our agenda, just like backup for others, as far as, you know, having a record of them. Or we just put it in later.
Right.
We just put it in later.
It'll be closed on 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Say on Monday. We get to pull that in on Tuesday morning and collate that, and then try to make sure if we can scan it in, or how can we upload it then to the link?
Yeah, so they could go the agenda, whether it's next day or two or whatever, they could go in those, and they, they would see their public comment in there.
So we can work through that, but it's going to take some staff time to actually, if there's hundreds of them, if there's whatever.
Yeah, we just got to.
We'll take some staff time to really put that together, scan it in, and then upload it.
Okay.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't say right now it'll be there by 5:00 PM.
I'm with you.
I'm going to think that's going to take some staff time and some effort to get that pulled together, but we can definitely work on that.
And I'm not saying that, that, that it has to be in there by 5:00 PM. I'm just saying that, that if you want a good place for people to, some point in time to access it, you know, you just stick them in there.
Yeah, and, and I will say that, that's probably something that we really should discuss with IT before we go even further, because I don't know if that is, you know, possible as far as how many we could put in there, but we can definitely talk about that.
Okay. All right. The one other item we need to
Chairman, can I ask one other question, since it's a little unusual meeting?
Go ahead.
And it's on the, our one fund?
Wait, we still need to vote on the, sorry.
Okay.
Let's go get ahead. So, sorry, I'm sorry, I made a motion. Do we, who got a second? You, Amanda seconded it. Got great public comment. Thank you, Jerry, for your input on it. I do think that, you know, these are special times, and we do need to take reasonable steps to walk our talk in terms of not having public gatherings, but, you know, I think as we go through this, though, it is really important that we do everything we're doing in the most transparent way we can. The public, we do need to listen to the community. The community is going to help us figure out the right things to do. So I do want us to absolutely encourage the public to be involved in what we're doing as we navigate all this. So appreciate everyone's input on a good process. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. Going back to the One Buncombe Fund.
Yeah. Would, and I actually got a, got a question from a constituent while we were sitting there, and I missed it, but would, would the program include grants for self-employed individuals? Do we see that as being part of it?
Yes. There've been a number of questions. We talked about this filling in the cracks, right, and so one of the cracks is, you know, 1099 independent contractors may not be eligible for unemployment insurance, big-time crack, and so this program seeks to fill that crack. I've seen already some similar information on the internet about this, so I want to be very clear. That would be the intent.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Chairman.
No problem. All right, last item. We need a motion to retroactively approve the closure of the Register of Deeds on yesterday, March 23rd, and today, March 24th.
If, if I could just ask to add that they would continue operations as they have in the last few days, which is closed to in-person traffic, but to continue to conduct business as previously authorized?
Going forward?
Starting tomorrow morning, yes, sir.
So we're closing a physical space, that's part of the, right, access to the physical space?
Yes, except for marriage licenses or by appointment only, and those have to be done in person by law.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that completes the scheduled agenda items that we wanted to work through. If there's no other items, I'll adjourn the meeting. Or let's actually, is there a motion to adjourn?
You going to take public comment after?
Oh, yeah, all right, we'll, we'll do that, too. Let's, it's good, it's not actually on the agenda, but is there any other, any other public comments before we adjourn this evening? All right. Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.